Seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Villages Nougleres Board Meeting to order. Lynn, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Michael Bell.
Present.
Mike Gansert.
Here.
Peggy Cruz.
Present.
Tammy Newberry.
I'm here.
Chuck Phillipson.
Present.
Roger Trupman.
Here.
Lori Words.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Item two, approval of the consent agenda. Approval of the agenda, I'm sorry.
Gansert, Mike, I would so move for the approval of agenda.
Michael Bell will second.
Tammy will second.
Take a pick, Lynn. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, public comparisons and citizens comment. No debate will occur as borne on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
Gansert, Mike, I would approve of consent agenda.
Tammy will second.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, new business. Discussion consideration, resolution twenty-one dash zero-three, reserve fund policy slash debt policy. This is something we do annually. Drake or Lynn, if you want to speak on it at all?
Lynn?
Sure. As Roger said, it is an annual resolution. It just updates what our working capital and our emergency reserve account is based on the 2021 general fund expenditures, because it's a percentage of the general fund expenditures. And then it also updates us on where we are with debt service and reiterates our current policy to go to seventy-five percent of the total maximum. And you'll see down at the bottom there, it tells us where we are in the reserve. So we're pretty much well-funded. We don't really need to make any transfers or anything.
Gansert, Mike here, I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty-one dash oh-three.
And Michael Bell will second that.
Okay. Any discussion on the item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, parks and recreation. Line A, committee chairperson report. Chuck?
I guess. I guess in lieu of report, we could just, since our last meeting concerned the parking pool fees and the Glarner Park Improvement Project. I believe we could just move on to that. Part of the agenda is okay with everyone?
Yeah, that's fine, Chuck.
Okay, so item B is the resolution for the parking pool fees. As you have them in your packet. We looked them over, discussed it, and felt that no changes needed to be made at this time. Any questions on that I would entertain, but
Why do you believe that there should be no change?
Let me ask you, do you think there should be a change?
Yeah, based off of the five-year comparison between Nougleres, Monroe, Broadhead, Bellville, Monticello, Mount Horb, and Sauk Prairie Schools, there's a few areas in which we are definitely the lowest pretty consistently through several aspects. This is primarily looking at the resident versus non-resident fees. And I'm just curious why.
Okay. I think it was the feeling of the committee that, number one, we're not in competition with other communities. Number two, we're very close with most of them. And well, number three, in light of COVID and things that are going on, it was a feeling that was not a good time to to increase fees. And number four, this is a service we provide for the community. It's not a business. It's not a profit-making enterprise. So
I understand why we would not want to make a profit. You know, I think the biggest goal that I'm trying to push for is get closer to breaking even. If we look at our recreation programs, you know, our child programs, baseball and softball, we're looking at an average of about nine thousand dollars deficit from that. You know, I feel like that is pretty reasonable for us to deal with every year, especially over a five-year period of consistently being around that ten thousand, negative ten thousand dollar mark, because it's a program that is really assisting multiple children, multiple aspects. And you know, and if you continue on, you're looking at the swim team. They got an average of, over the five years, of seventy-six dollars, so they're breaking even. Swimming lessons is about two thousand dollars, but that's also a life lesson that I feel is reasonable for people to have. But then the get to the swimming pool or next, the net five, five years is negative thirty-three thousand. And that's, that's a huge jump from all the other things that are offered. I'm just curious about that.
Well, I mean, I certainly understand where you're coming from, but I think if you looked at, you've seen the fees from other other towns, but you haven't seen the bottom line of what they're doing. I think a lot of these communities are subsidizing swimming pools to a much greater extent than we are. So you should probably keep that in mind. The swimming pool is probably, I don't know of any place where a swimming pool even comes close to to even breaking even. It's a service we provide in, in normal times. It's something that we offer out to our tourist-oriented business. People like to use the pool. I realize that there is one motel that has a pool, but it is a service that is used by, by our visitors to the community, although obviously not in the past year and probably not in the next year. But part of the reasoning, I guess.
Chuck, this is Peggy. Have we, do you anticipate that we will incur additional expenses in the programs, especially the pool, because of COVID?
I really I don't have an answer for that. I don't know if Drake or Lynn.
I can jump in and Lynn can add if she has anything, but I would anticipate that our loss will be greater than the average, simply because the, the, the the cost of operating the pool, staffing, lifeguards, chemicals, utilities are pretty constant. There's a certain amount of people you have to have there to safely serve as lifeguards and have it be safe for the community. And we had probably a lower attendance since we, if you'll recall, we did a sign up, a pre-sign up in order to swim for hour and a half time slots, and we also reduced the rates for the season. So I would anticipate that, yes, we will see a greater deficit for the pool for the year 2020. Lynn, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't really. I guess I was thinking that when we, you know, looking at this resolution going forward for 2021, I would assume that if things are not where we want them to be when the season starts, there may be some adjustments as we did last year. I don't know. That's something I guess we can always talk about at some point when it happens.
I mean, some of my question is, is, for example, like recreational sports outside, will we have to buy hand sanitizer for the teams? Or is that their expense? Will there be costs in oversight that might be included in the seasonal games, et cetera?
I believe in the 2020 season, we did, Chris did purchase some materials for teams, cleaning supplies, sanitizing supplies, which, Lynn, I believe we were reimbursed through CARES Act funding for a number of those items. So that may not be available to us in 2021 if it is necessary to purchase those supplies again. So that, that could be an additional 2021 expense. If, that could fall on, on the village's budget.
This is Peggy one more time, and then I'll be quiet. I'm of the belief of Michael as well. I, I know this is a service we provide to the community, but my goodness, it's a service that we would at least want to break even on or get closer to that point. I don't think the entire community uses the pool or participates in the recreational activities. And we would just like to pay our bills. So other people are paying for something that they're not using and others are subsidizing that. So I would like to get closer to a break-even point.
I, I would just, I would like to add that Chuck, Chuck was correct in that I, I am not aware of a public pool that does break even. So that, that goal may be, may be difficult to achieve because the, the rates that we would have to charge to increase the rate to a point where we may break even to cover the thirty-three thousand dollar subsidy that the general fund provides. We would probably see a significant reduction in use because of the, the cost.
Maybe we just keep up with
My understanding, my this is Tammy. One thing to remember, folks, is that when your property values are affected by services that communities offer. So when people start shopping for where they want to live or where they want to build property and different things like that, things like pools and libraries and other things like that make a community attractive. So you have to, you know, you have to remember that that is a part of the reap, return on an investment such as a pool. Just throwing that out there.
This is Peggy again. My concern is that as, as costs go up for, you know, chemicals and service hourly wages, et cetera, we, we should at least try to keep pace with perhaps the same deficit rather than log back. And in terms of the village, I don't see it growing by leaps and pounds all outside. You know, services that we provide are often used by those that are outside of the community. So I guess I would like to at least keep pace with the deficit instead of continuing to fall backward. Obviously, I know that we're never going to break even, but as Michael said, get closer to perhaps that, or at least absorb some of those increasing costs. Thanks.
And, and don't get me wrong, guys. If, if you go to page thirty-two here under the swimming pool, if you look at the revenue that we've been pulling in over the last five years, it's been pretty consistent. It's been sitting around that, that thirty thousand, a little bit over thirty thousand on a couple of years. So it's been pretty consistent about how much money is pulling in. And these last two years, I have to, let, 2018, 2019, we have decreased the expenses. You know, we've, overall, it's been doing better. We've been, you know, pinching our, our money a little bit more to, to, you know, try and save for the taxpayers and all that. It's just, I see that pattern where the last five years, your, your revenue for admissions has been pretty much the same for five years straight. So that's kind of telling me, you know, since we increased it, unfortunately, we increased it in 2015. And so that doesn't show if there was an increase or decrease in the number of people that were using the services before 2015. But other than that, it's been, ever since the price changed, it's been pretty close to the same number of people using it within a, a little bit of a degree there. So yeah, that's, that's why I'm kind of looking at possibly increasing the admissions for the swim, swimming, swimming pool, just to try and help get down that, that deficit a little bit more. You know, even if we dropped off eight to ten thousand dollars of expenses, that is getting us much closer to what would currently be like an eighteen thousand dollar deficit or in 2018, a twelve, a twelve thousand dollar deficit. Which really is kind of getting you closer to even those, those programs with, with kids that are involved in it. So unfortunately, I did not go through and try and run the numbers of how much we'd have to increase the, the funding by or the, increase the admission by in order to try and get those numbers. I just identified some of the areas in which we are charging less than the vast majority of other, you know, Mineral Broadhead, Bellville, those other towns and villages. And yeah, yeah, that's all I've really done, so.
So Michael, I would just, I would like to say, this is Tammy, I would just like to say that I see what your point is. And I think that this is something that I would want to look at later, but I kind of lean towards, I just want to say this, that I understand what Chuck's trying to say of maybe this isn't the year when people are already, you know, frustrated with trying to find things that they can do with their families and trying to keep their finances going with whatever situation that they're facing. So that's, I just want to say that.
Okay. And I, I don't disagree with you, Tammy, and I don't disagree with you either, Chuck. It's just, I, I want to point this out, and I wanted to ask these questions just so that we had it in front of us. Because I just had a feeling that, that this was a little, little off, and just wanted to make sure everyone was looking at it, I guess.
Well, I think it's at the time of the year when we have to make a decision on these pool and park fees, because pretty soon Chris and everybody's gonna have to get this set up, because there'll be people asking for it already. So I think we need a motion and a vote on item B.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we maintain them for next year, maintain the fees as they have been for the year 2021.
I will second that motion, Lori Words.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion?
I, Gansert and Mike here, and I would just, I think I'm all for it because of the timing and whatnot. But I think that we should take a look at it this summer, at least. We should, in order for the following year, for year 2022.
I'd be fine with that.
Fine, me too.
Chuck, were you going to say something?
No.
Okay, okay. Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Item C, Chuck.
Okay, the next item is the authorization to bid the Glarner Park Improvement Project. I'm gonna, you, you have the synopsis in the packet. But I'm gonna let Drake just elucidate on this for clarification.
Sure. So if you recall, in 2019, the village designed improvements to the Glarner Park baseball and softball field, with saying anticipated completion date in 2020. But upon receiving bids for the improvement project, the cost exceeded what the village board determined to be reasonable and rejected all bids. The lowest bid with all included was roughly five hundred thousand dollars at the last time we did bid the project. The village then asked their project engineer, Farah Graham, to identify items that could reduce the cost in December 2020. The Parks and Recreation Committee had Farah Graham at the meeting who presented a new set of plans. The new plans include a base bid, which includes the cost-saving measures. For example, reduced grading, reduced fencing, elimination of the playground, elimination of utilities for the concessions, a future concession stand, lower-cost fencing, and a lower-cost backstop, among other things. The bid documents also contain several, contain several alternate bids. For these, the village will be able to choose from based on their desired scope for the project and their budget. For example, there are alternates for the inclusion of additional fencing, additional grading, alternative fence coating, utility installation for the future concession stand, and an upgraded backstop. After receiving the bids, the Park and Recreation Committee will review, determine which, if any, alternates desires, and identify the lowest responsible bidder to make a recommendation to the village board. Parks and Recreation Committee did recommend authorizing staff to publish the bid documents.
So I think what you need is a motion to give the Parks and Recreation Committee permission to go ahead and put those bids out. Is that what you're asking for?
A motion to authorize the bidding of the project would suffice.
This is Tammy, and I would go ahead and authorize the, or make a motion to authorize the bidding of the project as explained.
This is Peggy, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Public Works and Public Safety, committee chairperson report. Peggy?
We had a meeting on the eleventh. We discussed an operator license for Caitlin Rindi to be approved, and it was. We had some information via Bert and Jeff on the renovation. Apparently, it was moving well ahead of schedule until they ran into a few snags with some ordering or some, what was it, infrastructure? Was it wiring, Drake? I couldn't remember.
It's, it's electrical, electrical systems here with the subcontractor from, was it Arlet or whatever. They were not responding to emails and phone calls, and they just kind of pushed the PD's timeline back.
And either of them didn't seem to be really irritated by it. They felt that the, the things were working and going along smoothly. And then we will have on the budget today, or I'm sorry, on the agenda today, the parking restrictions for Third Street. And that was another discussion that we had, but that will be discussed down below. And that was it.
Oh, okay, thanks, Peggy. Item B, consideration discussion, resolution twenty-dash-zero-one, prohibited of parking on west side of Third Street between Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue.
Nougleres CMS had expressed concern regarding the navigation of emergency vehicles on Third Street when vehicles are parked on both sides of the street. The police department did review the street and recommend parking be prohibited on the west side of Third Street from Fourth Avenue to Sixth Avenue. This will allow emergency vehicles access and allow, and allow them to avoid downtown during crowded times. Emergency services will also have access to Highway thirty-nine from their stations, and the vehicles will not have to operate against oncoming traffic. It could be possible that we would not be able to have the signs installed until spring. But the Public Works Public Safety Committee did recommend approval of resolution twenty-dash-zero-one to prohibit parking on the west side of Third Street from Fourth Avenue to Sixth Avenue.
Great. Just to clarify, it's, it should be resolution twenty-one oh-one.
Oh, okay.
You're correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. May I ask why they chose not having parking on the west side versus the east side of the street?
The east side, if I understand correctly, is already a no parking zone.
Right, that's correct.
So there'll be no parking on Third Street between fourth and sixth at all?
That'd be correct.
Okay.
Bert here, I thought
I don't think that's accurate.
Oh, am I wrong?
I think we're just moving it to the other side.
I don't think so.
I thought we were taking everything down.
You're taking it all down by this resolution.
Roger, the reason why they did that, Bert, correct me if I'm wrong, but that way, if the emergency vehicle goes up the hill, they are going in the direction of traffic, and they don't have to worry about anything going through there. If you are in an emergency vehicle and you're going in that direction, the last thing you want to do is have a car coming at you. You have to impede into the other lane to go around them in an emergency situation. That way, it gives them a direct passage all the way up.
I got two questions. Number one, I, I think there's no parking on the east side of Third Avenue, at least on, at least between fourth and fifth. So correct me if I'm wrong there, but there's a sign there that says no parking.
You're correct, Chuck.
So could there be parking on the, on the east side? And my other question is, I'm, I'm not sure the the, does this require a public hearing? Have the affected property owners been notified of this? Do they care? Is it okay with them? I'm just asking. I understand the need. I understand the, absolutely understand the priority of traffic flow, but just want to make sure that we're just not jumping into this posthaste.
The parking ordinance doesn't require a public hearing. It states that, that the village can designate no, no parking zones with the appropriate signage. So to answer that question, it did not indicate that a public hearing was necessary. To my knowledge, property owners were not individually notified.
Is it unreasonable to think that they should be just out of common courtesy, even though this is potentially a necessity? And also, and also, let's clarify the, let's clarify the no parking zones on Third Street. I'm positive there is a no parking sign. I'm positive there is a no parking sign on the east side of Third Street between Fourth and Fifth. Is that correct?
That is correct, Chuck. There is no parking between, um, the Fourth Avenue and Fifth Avenue on the east side already. The reasoning of that was, back in the day when it was Foods, the semis could back in there and everything like that without having any traffic there.
Hmm. So, would it be a problem to allow parking on the east side? And no parking on the west side?
Uh, there, there could be. Um, the other thing of it is, is there's an ordinance that says anytime across of an emergency, um, like building like that, like a fire department or EMS, um, by any driveways, which actually would be on that side where they park, across the street, there has to be a yellow curb because there's not supposed to be parking whatsoever across from a driveway from, uh, those kinds of buildings. And that is a village ordinance. Um, so that side of the curb is really gonna get messed up fast.
Okay, um, I, I don't have a problem with any of that. I just, I, I would like to make sure that the property owners are aware of this and, um, frankly, frankly, I think the only property owner that is significant, significantly affected by this is a first responder on the fire department. So, has, has anyone weighed in on this with, is the fire department or, um, I think, I think we know what I'm talking about, Bob Burna, who, who parks his trucks.
I agree with you, with what you're talking about. I did not realize, um, at least between, uh, uh, Fourth and, or Fifth and Sixth, you can park on the east side. So persons who are parking, uh, in my block have an alternative. I did not realize that, uh, between Fourth and Fifth, I guess I've never really looked, that, that east side parking is already, uh, taken. And Joe, you're saying that, uh, if you were to come closer to Fifth Avenue up the block, that is a no parking area. Is it possible for us to switch that so that that, uh, they could park on the opposite side of the street there? Or do you think that that would create a different problem?
Are you talking between Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue, or are you talking between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue?
Between Third Avenue and, or between Fourth and Fifth, yes. Between Fourth and Fifth, if, where the foods are no longer there. So the reason for that having to be a no parking zone is no longer in that area?
Well, what we find out is, um, we don't have problems in that area per se. Um, the only vehicle that we have there is Bobby's. Um, and I've talked to Bobby about this, told him that this was coming up tonight and everything like that. And, you know, he kinda agrees, you gotta do what you gotta do. Um, the, the, the issue of it is, is he said, if you remember back when that got switched in, um, on that part of the street, and I don't know, Roger, you've been here long enough and stuff like that, but on the board, they, they did that when, I believe Foods was there and LBN Armory's was having, uh, semi show up. And that was a big issue, um, to get stuff in there. And on festivals and stuff like that, people were blocking their driveways, that kinda issue, the way it sounded from Bobby telling me this. Um, so, you know, I think Bobby would work with us on it. Uh, I, I don't think there's gonna be that big of a problem.
Uh, just to jump in, if the, if the board would like, uh, to, we could, uh, defer action on this and I could draft a letter, uh, to the affected properties on the street, uh, letting them know, uh, that this is being considered.
I think based on the, on the, uh, current circumstances, weather conditions and so on, the, uh, note in the, in the, uh, agenda that possibly we couldn't even put the signs up until spring. Um, maybe that would be a good idea to just defer it for a month.
I'm gonna have to agree with you here, Chuck. I, I feel like there's no huge rush in regards to this. Um, and yeah, I, I definitely agree. We, we need to make sure that our residents are 100% aware, at least on the, uh, the village aspect, that, uh, this is something that we're intending on doing. If they'd like to voice their opinion, please attend one of these meetings type thing. Um, so if we can just, yeah, I, I, yeah, I'm gonna have to recommend or I, I guess I should even just make a motion, uh, to, uh, uh, go ahead and defer this decision, uh, for a month period of time. In the meantime, so long as, uh, the village drafts a letter to affected residents, uh, letting them know of, uh, this, this possible decision that will affect their, their livelihood.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Roger, I just had, uh, one quick, quick question of it, and I think, just to be sure there was no confusion, that we weren't eliminating the parking altogether on between, uh, Fourth and Fifth. We were just shifting it over to the east side of the street. Is that correct? That was my interpretation of it. So basically the parking isn't changing that much in that, in those two blocks. We're just asking that it gets shifted over from the, uh, west side over to the east side. So when emergency vehicles go up that hill, they can park all they want on the west side. It's just to keep that east side of the street lane open for southbound traffic, not having to go out and around cars. That was my interpretation of the whole thing.
But that's not, that's not-
I just wanna clarify to be sure that was correct.
That's not what the resolution says, so.
Yeah, that, that's backwards.
We need to-
You got your, you got your east and your wax, west mixed, mixed up.
But the resolution, the resolution ultimate result, it would ban parking on both sides because it doesn't say anything about the east side. So-
Correct. And, and what I'm saying is, I don't believe that was the intent of it, to ban the parking totally. It was just to shift it from the, one side of the street to the other side and make it uniform between the block.
Well, then I think the month, uh, the motion for the, for the, uh, postponement of a decision is, uh, a good idea.
Yeah, and I agree with that. I just wanted to clarify what I think my interpretation of it was, is that just shifting it from the sides.
Hello?
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Answer the phone.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item eight, Fire District Board Committee Liaison. Tammy?
Um, nothing too new there. Uh, they are gonna be trying to do another, uh, dinner where it would be carryout. Um, and they're going to go ahead and start to look towards their other events with the hopes that they may be able to happen. Uh, but if they can't happen, they're not gonna lose anything by starting the plan. So they're hoping for their summer events, but realizing that they may not occur. Uh, but please, if you get a chance to support, uh, them with, uh, carryout dinners, I believe that that's going to be coming, so pay attention for that. Um, I think that's really it for fire.
Okay, Tammy, thank you. Uh, Library Board, Tammy, please.
Uh, yeah, we're still, uh, making progress towards building in 2021 and that's where they're, we have another meeting tomorrow, so, uh, not a whole lot going on there over the, over the last month either.
Ganser, Mike here, I have a question. Building where?
Uh, that's still being determined.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tammy.
Hmm.
Uh, I, item 10, Historical Preservation, Historic Commission. Mike?
Yeah, that's easy for you to say.
For sure.
Well, even though we didn't have any meetings at all, um, there is an item that came up at the state level. We were, we, uh, made a, um, application to have uh, an area downtown Second Street, uh, approved for an historical, uh, preservation area. And, uh, there was a gentleman that came down from the Wisconsin State Journal. Um, Drake, do you wanna continue on with what transpired there?
Sure, uh, so the Wisconsin Historical Society, uh, chose to, they designated, uh, two areas within the, uh, village. If you remember, um, back in November, I had sent you the, the letter that they had sent to the village. Um, so that was approved, those two historic districts, which are uh, honorary and not regulatory, uh, designations, uh, were approved at the state level. Uh, they're moving it on to the federal level, but that process will take several months. Uh, a gentleman from the, a reporter from the Wisconsin State Journal came in, uh, to meet with some businesses within, uh, on Second Street. Uh, he was at the Oath House, um, Toffler's and, um, the, uh, tattoo shop. I apologize, the name is escaping me, um, at the moment. Uh, but met with those, those owners, um, uh, to kinda discuss, uh, their properties, uh, the, some of the history of the buildings, uh, and also just in general how they are doing, uh, during this pandemic. So it ran in, uh, Sunday's paper. Uh, and I believe it can be found, uh, online as well, if, if you are interested.
Thanks, Drake. Um, I did receive a, a report from Sandy Bloom, um, regarding the annual chalet income for 2020 was $719.69. Uh, not good, but understanding the, uh, Chinese virus, the way it is, it's, it's cut down tremendously. We also received a grant from the Nuglaris Community Foundation in the amount of $3,211.30. And that will cover the cost of, uh, of storage bags for silver items from the collection and a non-slip runner on the wooden stairs and a new vinyl floor to replace the tile flooring in basement. And so Sandy's gonna, uh, proceed with that in getting, uh, she's been talking apparently for, to Zershen. So she's going to proceed with that. Um, and that's it.
Okay, Michael, thank you much. Item 11, President's Report. Discussion Consideration Resolution 21-2, Transfer of $200,000 From TID 3 Surplus to TID 4 To Fund the Nuglaris COVID-19 Relief Program. Uh, I'm gonna start off by saying, I think this would be a good thing. I do not think it's a fair thing to all our businesses in town. Uh, we can grant money to the ones that are in the TIF district, but we can't grant any to the ones outside of the TIF district. And we have many businesses outside of the TIF district. So I just, uh, I just don't wanna see us as a village giving relief money to some of the businesses and not all of them. And I'm done.
Um, I have a question. Ganser and Mike here. Who drafted the, uh, the, uh, resolution? And the ideas for, for the transfer of the $200,000?
I drafted the resolution and the program after, uh, discussions with, um, Trustee Bell, and that came up after we had learned from our TIF advisor of MSA, uh, who is MSA of other communities who have provided, uh, other programs. Uh, so I had drafted it, um, as, uh, Trustee Bell had, had hoped to, to propose something, something like it. And so I, I, I found some examples of other communities and drafted it based off of that. And the resolution was to, um, have a formal document to approve the, the transfer of the TIF funds to, to fund it. Uh, but if there's any questions about the document, I, I, I did auth, author it.
Um, okay, Drake, I, and I wasn't questioning anything other than where the information and who gathered the information and drafted the resolution. So I find no issue with it.
Yep, that, that was me. It's largely based off of a similar, uh, program that was done in the, uh, city of, of Wapon, uh, with, uh, with some changes to, to fit, uh, Nuglaris.
Can I ask a question? What is the difference between these TID 3 and TID 4?
Uh, TID 3, uh, the easiest way to explain it is TID 3 is, uh, the Hilltop Brewery. Uh, TID 4 encompasses, um, if you, if you look in your, your email, there's, there's a map, uh, that I sent earlier today, uh, with the boundary. Uh, but it's, it's commonly referred to as the downtown slash uptown, uh, TID. So the, the differences between the two are, are their boundaries. Um, and, uh, the areas of the village that they encompass.
Okay, thank you.
Drake?
Yeah.
Is there no way to transfer money to other TIDS, which would make it more inclusive for other businesses in town?
There are no other TIDS in the village.
Oh, okay. So there's no way to transfer TID money to a general fund? It has to go from a TID to a TID?
Correct. TID 3 is set up as a donor TID, uh, which means that it can transfer, transfer funds to other, uh, TIF districts. Um, but you cannot, it cannot transfer to the village's general fund, uh, until, uh, the closure of the TID.
Drake, let me ask you this. Um, if there are approximately 50 businesses in TID 4, how many are still remaining that would not be covered? Do you know, offhand?
Hmm, you mean outside of the TID?
Right, mm-hmm.
I, I, I don't have that number.
Okay. I mean, that's, if there are 50 businesses approximately in the, in TID 4-
There, there would be several, um, but I don't have an exact number.
Uh, probably, well, my thought is, is, and I don't know, uh, if there was maybe four or five businesses, I don't know what the board would think about, um, you know, using some of our revenue to support that if, if we wanted to give it an overall blanket. But if it, it is more than that, then I guess maybe perhaps we couldn't afford it, but
Yeah, there's, uh-
Quite a few.
Yeah, there's over 100 businesses in, in the village area.
Okay.
Um, and just with these, um, these 49 businesses that are under TID, TID 4, um, I, we were going through and kinda looking at the number of, of people that would probably take it versus the number of people who wouldn't take it. You know, you got, you got the newspaper is, is one of those businesses. So it's a question of, we don't really know if they would take it or not. Uh, the brewery is, is one of them, if I remember correctly, 'cause they got that one corner. Um, so, so there's a lot of businesses that are in town here. But yeah, there's, there's even more outside of town. You know, you gotta look at the industrial park over there. You got all those ones. Yeah, it's, yeah.
So could, could you, Mike or Roger or somebody clarify exactly, um, what the relief program entails?
Uh, so it would be, uh, it's a grant program for $4,000 for any business that applies for it within this TID 4 district, which would encompass those 49 businesses.
Okay, just a blanket thing? It's, it's for anything?
Uh, it's not completely for anything, no. Uh, there are exemptions on here of what you may not use it for. Uh, it would be under page two here for that, ineligible improvements. So reimbursement for expenses incurred prior to March 25th, 2020, uh, payment for non-business debt such as personal credit card charges, owner's personal expenditures, including home mortgages and car payments, uh, construction and/or physical property improvements to real estate, regardless of whether located within TID 4 boundaries.
Yep, and there, there is an application process. Uh, it's set up so that applications would be, uh, received and reviewed, uh, by the, the CDA. Um, and there's, uh, there's criteria, it's a, there's a rubric, a scoring, uh, rubric, um, that, that can be found in, in the, in the information in, in your packet. Um, it outlines why, what would be, uh, el- what businesses would be eligible, um, and, 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 and what kind of expenses, uh, could be, uh, re- reimbursed that were incurred because of COVID. And then there's explanations for that to, to prove hardship or to explain hardship, uh, among other, other questions in the application.
Ganser, Mike here. I'm just gonna make a statement and, uh, or a comment. And, uh, I have to agree with Roger in that it's, it's, uh, it's tough to say, yeah, we can, we can help you out or we can help some businesses, but only if you're in one district, in the District 4, TID District 4. Um, and I feel, I feel bad about not being able to help out other businesses that are not located within that TID district.
Yeah, I get, I get that too, but I kind of feel like if we have an ability to help anybody, do you not help them just because you can't help everybody? I, I guess that's a kind of a, a question too.
Tammy, I agree with you. I think anything that we can do to help, we should.
So if, 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 if we wouldn't do this, then nobody benefits, correct? It's sort of like a use it or lose it thing?
Uh, correct. If, 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 if the transfer wasn't made there, there, and the program wasn't approved, then there would, there would be no funds available.
For anyone.
Correct. And it, I just wanna, it is a legal restriction, uh, that they, the TID, TID funds could not be used outside the boundary. So that is, that is, um, state law that prohibits the use of TID, TID funds outside of the, the district.
So it seems that we could help some people.
Yeah, I, and I agree. I think we should help whoever we can. With that in mind, I'm gonna, um, make a motion to approve, um, the Resolution 21-02 for the transfer of $200,000 from District, uh, TID District 3 to, uh, District 4 to fund the, uh, COVID relief program.
Lori Words, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion second. Lynn, I'd like a roll call vote on this, please.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, is there any more discussion?
Uh, I guess I'd just like to say, I, I, I realize the perceived unfairness of this, but, um, if we help some of us, I think we help all of us in these times. And, uh, I think that's the best way to proceed.
This is Peggy. I, I just have a question for you, Drake. Do you see anything coming down from the state level, uh, to, um, provide some relief to businesses as a result of COVID?
I, I don't know. Um, you, you hear, uh, obviously all that I would hear would, would come from the news, uh, just like, just like anybody else. I don't have any, um, any inside baseball into whether there is state or federal aid, um, that will be coming and at what time it would be coming.
So nothing in motion at this point, okay?
The most I, that I would know about would be in regards to restaurants. Um, there, there's some sort of, uh, discussion in regards to that. Uh, however, uh, there's also other businesses that are downtown Nuglars that don't, that are not restaurants. You know, you got a lot of shops that are downtown. Uh, you got the bars. And any of those businesses there are heavily affected. And the goal of this motion, or this, this, uh, resolution would end up being that we're just trying to keep the businesses alive. You know, you got the tax season coming up here. You got, um, uh, rents, you got utilities, all these items that are, are on these, these businesses during the winter time, during the time where we are dead as a, a village anyways. And the goal is just to keep them alive and, and limping along until summer comes and, you know, hopefully the vaccine's here and, and hopefully people are gonna get out into the world again. It's just a little bit of a lifesaver, just to try and keep people moving a little bit longer. I agree with everyone else how you're saying, you know, it's not fair that we can't do it uniformly against everyone. But this is unfortunately where we're at. And we will get heat for this if we, if we vote yes for it. But we will also have other people who love us for, for, you know, pushing through and trying to, to get this done.
Well, I think, this is Peggy again. I think in some ways it provides uh, for a domino effect of all of them to fall because, uh, obviously the, the businesses that aren't going to, um, get the relief needed from this will still have perhaps, um, the, the relief known, the verbal relief known that not everybody's gonna fall down and fall down is hard. So that might sustain, uh, a somewhat, uh, deflated ship.
Good thought, Russ. I li- I like that.
Okay, just so everybody understands that this is a grant program and the money does not have to be paid back. You know, I still, I don't, I understand. I'm all, I would be all for helping everybody in the village if we could do it. But Mike said it best, somebody's gonna get some heat from the ones that don't have a chance to get this free money. So we've got a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion? Lynn, would you please call for the roll? Thank you.
Just, just for clarification, um, Roger, um, would you repeat the motion?
No.
Uh, Lynn, could you repeat the motion?
Sure. I have a motion by Mike Ganser to approve Resolution 21-02 For The Transfer Of $200,000 From TID 3 To TID Number 4 To Fund The COVID-19 Relief Program.
Thank you.
With a second by Lori Words.
Thank you.
Yep. Are we ready for the roll?
Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay. Michael Bell?
Uh, because the Chalet Land House is one of the businesses that could be affected by this. And because, um, my employers have not told me if we're gonna apply for it, I am recusing myself from this, this, uh, vote.
Michael Ganser?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz?
Yes.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trutman?
No.
Lori Words?
Yes.
Motion carries, um, what is that? Five, four, one against and one abstained.
Thank you, Lynn.
Mm-hmm.
Is there, no further business? We are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.